Phones.
All right, seeing that it's six o'clock, I will call the zoning board of appeals meeting for Tuesday, June 6, 2023 to order. Is this meeting being recorded?
It is.
It is being recorded. So this meeting is being recorded. Welcome to our new alternate, Mr. Jeff.
Chikowski.
Chikowski. Happy to have you here. Our first item is the approval of our meeting minutes, our draft meeting minutes from... We have all of these meeting minutes to approve?
These are all the meeting minutes that are outstanding.
Outstanding, okay.
Outstanding.
All right, so I suppose we'll start with June 7, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take each one at a time?
I'm just gonna say, can I make a motion to approve all draft minutes?
Okay, yep.
I'll second that.
Motion to second to approve all of the draft meeting minutes. They need discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, please pull the board.
Mr. Knoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Pieter?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, public hearing variance application relief from minimum lot size requirement to construct a duplex at 13 Nelson Street.
The applicant has submitted a request to withdraw without prejudice. They were looking to construct a duplex at 13 Nelson Street, but there is a continued moratorium on cutting the roadway. And there's always a five-year moratorium and roadway cuts for a newly paved road, and we're only two years into the repaving of Nelson. So if he had come forward to get the variance, the variance would have expired. So they're withdrawing without prejudice. They'll be back. But you'll have to vote to accept the request to withdraw.
Is there a motion to accept the request to withdraw?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Motion to second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, please pull the board.
Mr. Knoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Pieter?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, seeing that we have four people present, we'll appoint Mr. Chikowski to the... Did I say that right? To the variance applications, variance and special permit applications for 306 Kildare and the variance and special permit application for 25 Colonial Road. But we'll throw you right into the fire. All right, Mr. Daggett, you want to read the warrant for 306 Kildare?
In accordance with the provision of the Webster zoning bylaw, section 650-11B and 650-11C, the Webster zoning board of appeal will hold a public hearing on a variance application for relief from the side yard setback requirements to construct a new deck to an existing house and a special permit application for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming deck at the property located at 306 Kildare Road, assessor ID 58-A-50. The application was submitted by Robbie and Mike Comson, Comson, 6629 Cartelina Ave. Am I pronouncing that right? Cartelina Ave, Columbia, Maryland, applicant owner. Said site is located in the Lake Residential and Lake Watershed Protection zoning districts.
All right, Ms. Morgan, is there a staff report?
Yeah, I've got some site photos that show the existing conditions, belong with the area photograph, taken in 2021. This is the property that you're gonna be reviewing tonight. This is 306 Kildare. You can give you a feel for what's around it as well. Again, it's a 2021 aerial photograph. That was out there today. How a whole lot's changed in this surrounding neighborhood. These are the existing conditions. Let's turn around for the lighting camera. And this will give you a feel for what's happening here. The proposed deck in the front that requires the side yard variance is here. There's an existing deck in the back that's pre-existing non-conforming, and they're looking to expand that up further, which is an expansion of that non-conforming. And other than that, I can show you the plan set.
Yes, so.
This is the existing conditions. Now, and this is what's being proposed. This new deck means this side yard setback, and the expansion of this deck requires a special permit.
Okay. Did they submit a special permit application as well?
They did.
They did, okay.
We have had comments. There's the application, there's the variance application.
Oh, the special permit is after that, okay.
Through the chair, do we do both these at the same time, the special permit and the zoning, the variance?
You can do that. You'll have to do separate decisions because they have different exploration dates. You've done that before.
Okay.
And actually, you're welcome to read any public hearing notes you've just read, including both applications.
Okay, all right.
They'll have the same facts.
Yep.
Just the criteria, acceptance, or the criteria is different, so. Okay, is that it, Ms. Morgan?
That's it.
Okay, Mr.?
I'm here to represent.
Sure, yeah, please. If you wouldn't mind turning on the microphone and just stating your name and who you, what agency or builder you're with.
My name is William Corey. On South Shore Road, a friend of them, and they're not able to attend the meeting tonight, so I'm attending it for them.
Okay.
I have a set of the plans that you're required to extend the deck.
We'll deal with the, just so we have a separation of the applications, we'll talk about the variance application first, which would be the rear deck.
Right.
And then we can talk about the special permit, I suppose, after that. Or do you want to talk about both of them intermingled?
Well, it doesn't matter. Whatever works.
All right, so I got a question on your, on your application, whoever submitted it. There's gotta be circumstances related, special circumstances related to soil, shape, or topography that affect the land or structure in question. You stated that there aren't any special circumstances related to soil, shape, or topography. As a matter of law, that would cause your application to be denied because your first condition, your first element wouldn't be met.
Well, what they're proposing is just to extend the deck this much, and it's not the soil isn't gonna be disturbed, basically, because we're using techno post.
Yeah, I understand that.
Using the heel coils.
I understand what you're proposing to do, but there has to be a special circumstance that's related to the soil condition, the shape, or the topography of the land that's causing, that's limiting you to building this, this deck in that location.
I just don't.
I mean, I, we could extend, extend it, and you could think about your answer, you know, to next month. But if you say there aren't any special circumstances, then in my mind, the application kind of stops right there, or the analysis, because if you can't meet the first criteria, I can't get to the second element, because you have to have all four. You have to have unique site conditions that cause a hardship, and also it can't be detrimental to the public good, and it can't derogate or nullify the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws. So you have to have all, it's an and, you have to have one, two, three, and four. It can't be, well, you don't have unique site conditions, but maybe you have a hardship. Or you don't have unique site conditions, you don't have a hardship, but it doesn't, it's not detrimental to the public good, or it doesn't nullify the intent of the zoning bylaw. You have to have all four of those. So I'm willing to continue the hearing if we, if there's an extension sign, but.
Are you talking about, basically, it's extending too close to the lake? Is that what it is?
No, I'm not talking, I'm talking about your rear, your rear deck right now, your variance application.
On the lakeside? It's funny, some people call the lake the front.
For the side yard. That's gonna go from, you want a, you want a six-foot variance that would give you a four-foot setback.
That's for the front.
For the front.
Front, towards the road. That's what I'm trying to get at, is what's unique about the property.
Well, right now, there's a driveway that goes downhill, and they're gonna fill that in. And they had an architect submit the plans to bring a retaining wall in, in the garage to do this. And they wanna put a front deck in so they can have access to the front door, which is gonna be located in the front of the house.
Was the hardship, or is the unique circumstance a slope of the driveway?
Well, the driveway's gonna get filled in and leveled off, leveled off, because they don't want the underground garage anymore.
Okay.
The driveway goes downhill into the basement, and there's a garage door there and a garage inside. So they're filling that in, leveling it all off.
Could you have Andrew that map back up, please?
Can you bring the topographical map?
The, the, the new site plan that, that we're, we're talking about right now?
This is the piece where you're talking about.
So that's, that's the new?
Can you zoom in on that? Sorry.
Yeah, please.
Variants we're talking about.
So it's actually a side yard setback, not really a front yard setback?
No, no, side yard only.
Wouldn't that be pre-existing non-conforming, because the house is already in the setback?
No, that's a brand new, that's a brand new deck. The expansion of the deck in the back is expanding on a pre-existing non-conforming setback already. So that's a special permit. That's that whole Gale law thing.
Yeah.
But anytime you create something new, you have to follow this, the modern setbacks.
They're already in the setback, the houses.
Yeah, but this, the deck is new.
So if they have a pre-existing, it's not really a new variance, you're, they're already in the, in the setback.
But that has zoning protection because it's pre-existing non-conforming. The deck is not pre-existing non-conforming, so it's a new variance.
So it's two, it's two separate structures.
So if it was an addition, it would be different?
If it were, if it were an addition?
An addition to the house, like if they were putting it in a garage.
Yeah, and that would.
It would be pre-existing non-conforming?
That would depend, yeah, and it all boils down to how it's proposed on this side of the house.
Okay.
So what would be the difference between an addition and a deck if they're already in the, in the setback? I mean, I'm just getting confused and trying to sort through this in my head.
So, so the difference being this is a new, a new structure, a deck, a garage, anything that's a new structure.
How much expansion percentage-wise can you do for pre-existing conditions? Can you expand on it?
Twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, so the deck's considered part of the?
Actually, no, that twenty-five percent got struck. It's, any expansion of pre-existing non-conforming is at the discretion of the zoning board.
Any expansion?
Yeah, there's no longer that threshold.
There's not a percentage where you can?
Not anymore.
You can lean on the fact that they're already on the property line. You couldn't lean on it. It's at the discretion.
So that class, the, the presentation that we had, and we talked, we talked about already being in the setbacks with a, with a structure would trigger a, for any alteration would trigger the special permit because of the pre-existing non-conforming, even if it's addition, right? So the only reason why this would come up would be because you're making a modification to the existing structure. Whether it's an addition or the existing structure, you're still already in the setback.
Well.
We have some plans here.
No, we already have all of the things.
I, I, I understand the point. It's, it's, you're expanding in a pre-existing non-conforming structure. I think the case is, I think Gale dealt with a house. I don't know, offhand, when you're putting a deck onto a house, it's considered a brand-new structure, then if it's a brand-new structure, then yeah, I think you're correct in saying it's a variance. If it's considered an expansion of the, of the previous non-conforming structure, then yeah, you're right, it's a, it's a special permit.
Yeah, so the difference here is, in the back, they're, they have zoning protection because what they're doing will have the same footprint as the pre-existing non-conforming structure. So that's, that meets the criteria for special permit. They're expanding an existing structure. A new structure requires zoning review.
One of the, one of the things that I, I remember, and I could be remembering this wrong, was that if they're already in the setback and the encroachment doesn't get any further than what it is now, it, I thought that they, we talked about it being a special permit.
Yeah, if you're within the setback, that's, that's, that's correct.
Yeah.
I just, I think the, the issue we're gonna call up on is it's, is a deck a new structure, or is it an expansion of the pre-existing house?
And is this application being filed incorrectly to get this done?
Right, it would be, he's, he's under a tougher burden of review with a variance as opposed to a special permit. I don't know the legal answer to the question that's raised here, offhand. So we could wait a month, get clarification from counsel, or we could proceed if it's filed incorrectly and somebody challenges it, then that could be a problem for the other people you represent on review, on appeal.
But one of the things that makes this a deck in the front is the stair, the new front doors, the door for the access to the house is gonna be in the front of the house, not the side of the house. So they need a set of stairs going up to a platform, which would be the deck going into the front of the house.
Yeah, I, I, I understand what you're trying to, we're talking about whether this should be analyzed as a special permit or as a variance. And what I said is that a variance is a much higher standard of review. A special permit is much lower. Therefore, it's easier for, for you to convince us that, to approve it as a special permit as opposed to a variance, if we were given time to get the answer.
I can tell you that I did ask for department comments. You see here, water, sewer, highway, building, police were the only departments that replied, and nobody had any objection.
Mm-hmm.
I suppose that's, that's the first question for you, is do you want to wait for that determination, or do you, do you want to proceed as a, as a variance application? Because we don't, we can't answer that with the.
Well, whatever makes it more easier to move forward with this.
How long do we have to make a, to make a decision on this?
We would.
You have 100 days from the time the application was opened, and.
So we would, so we would have.
May 8. It came, so it'd be 100 days from May 8. You have until August 16. And you're meeting on the 18th.
We can meet in July.
And then you'll be beginning of, beginning of August again. So you're gonna have meetings within three weeks of each other.
Okay, okay.
I'd prefer some more time.
Why don't we, why don't we continue this hearing, both hearings, because we have time with the special permit as well, Ms. Morgan?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll continue.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, special permits, you, the clock doesn't start until the hearing closes, so there's more liberal.
What was the distance currently that they're requesting from the corner to the lot line?
Corner to the lot line, it's four feet.
They're asking for six feet?
It's 10 feet, so it's six feet they're asking for.
How close is their house now?
How close? Two feet.
I think it would benefit the applicant and us to get clarification on this issue before we proceed.
We'll cut the deck by six feet. Because the door is six feet from the other side.
Yeah. That would be the.
Worst case.
That would be the other option.
Yeah.
I'd rather have us have the correct analysis, so.
100%.
All right, so is there?
I can, I can ask town council tomorrow, and if he says re-advertise, we'll, we'll re-advertise.
Okay. All right, our next hearing is when I don't have the, I just have the.
The 18th.
The 18th. All right, so is there a motion to continue this to 6:00 PM on July 18th, is that?
July 18th.
July 18th, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
I'm gonna mispronounce your name, I'm sorry.
Don't worry, go ahead.
Mr. Chikowski?
Very well done.
All right. Mr. Knoyer?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Fales?
Yes.
And Mr. Pieter?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you. We'll, we'll get this question answered, and hopefully it comes up in, in your favor that it's a special permit.
Yeah, so we won't have an answer till the 18th?
You'll have an answer before then, but this meeting won't continue until the 18th.
Yeah. And this is pertaining to the extension of the two feet on the lakeside and the front deck?
It's, this is just the front yard. Your, your rear yard is definitely a special permit. It's the front yard, facing the road that we have questions on, or have a question on.
So how do they go forward with extending the deck in the back two feet?
We'll discuss that on the 18th.
Okay.
But that is definitely a special permit.
Yeah.
We don't have the same question with that. So you won't have a further delay. All right.
Are you unclear of what, what's happening? Are you unclear? Do you feel comfortable with what, with the conversation or the needs?
I'm not 100%.
Is there, is there somewhere you, is there somewhere, somewhere he can get clarification or help?
I think Ms. Morgan is.
Yeah, you can call the office and we can, we can talk. I'll explain to you what's happening. Because I'm sure the Comsons are gonna have questions, and I've been talking to them pretty extensively.
Yeah, okay, so nothing will happen until the hearing is rescheduled?
Well, the hearing continues to July 18th, and a decision will be made on August, in the first meeting in August, and then there will be a, there's a 20-day appeal period. So we're looking at the end of August, early September.
Okay, so there'll be another meeting here for that?
Yes.
On the 18th?
And I'll notify the Comsons.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, 25 Colonial Road relief from side yard setback to add a carport and expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure for, on a special permit. Mr. Daggett?
In accordance with the provision of the Webster zoning bylaw, section 650-11B and 65, and 11C, the Webster zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on a variance application for relief from the front yard and side yard setback requirements to construct an addition and carport to an existing house and special permit application for the expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure at property located at 25 Colonial Road, assessors ID 39-A-33. The applications were submitted by Brian Bohinko, 25 Colonial Road Webster owner applicant. Said site is located in Lake Residential and Lake Watershed Protection zoning district.
Okay.
All right.
All right, again, photos today. This is the 2021 aerial, showing the existing conditions several years ago. Here are today's photos that were taken. So what you see here in the front now looks like this. And I'll pull up the plan set in a minute. So these are the existing conditions. Here's the neighbor immediately to the north of them. You can see the neighbor here on the corner. Bath House Road is right in front of my car there. More photos. This is the side yard setback you'll be considering. And another final photo of the same area. The plan is, form, notice, D, plot, plan. All right, here's the plot plan. Yep, that's his plot plan, which is required as part of the application. We have the two forms, the hearing notice. Oh, here we go. So this is what's being proposed. 20 feet's required in the front. Now that that language is gone, that is a hard and fast number. And they're looking to do an addition with the carport. And this is the special permit for the expansion of the, of the pre-existing non-conformity, and this is the variance for the front yard.
All right. All right, Ms.
Want me to turn that? Would it be easier? I'm just, we're all doing this.
I'm looking at it sideways.
I know, we're all doing the same thing.
Yeah, it's okay. I always, you know, my training is always like.
Oh, there we go.
Make sure the north arrow is always north. So now it's not.
So the variance is for the 11 feet?
For the 11 feet.
And then the pre-existing's the side, which is already, they're already in?
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Bohinko. Okay, I guess I suppose we'll start with the, the variance application then. So we have, this is, only the carport would be within the 20-foot setback, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So what's unique about the property as it relates to soil conditions, shape, or topography that especially affects this structure?
What is, can you say it?
What is, what special circum, what's unique about the soil conditions of the property, the shape of the property, or the topography that specifically is affecting the carport, causing it to be placed in this location?
There's kind of really no other place to put it.
Mm-hmm. So it's, it's a matter of convenience?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right. And if this was placed in another location, would it create a hardship?
It would, because that's where our door, the entry door is. So I wouldn't want to put the carport off. So, I wouldn't want to put the carport off to the side and be walking through rain and all that, it's not the, that's not what I'm trying to put the carport for.
So the, the, the pie shape of his lot would probably limit the placement of his car, carport?
And the carport has to be?
Line.
The one?
Which line is the property line? That one?
Oh, the other one. That was, uh, that was split up, it used to be all one lot at one time.
Mm-hmm.
When the Mandarovics had it, and then it was split up. That was way back in 1930 was that line that you're seeing with the Z's in it. And then, uh, what the hell is their name? Before the Mandarovics, they bought everything. And they split it up.
So is Lot 1 somebody else's property?
The, with, no, no, that's all, that's all ours. So it's Lot 1, and then the other one over there is Lot 2. So Lot 1 and Lot 2 used to be all one.
So is Lot 1 vacant?
No. That's our yard.
I need, I need to know who she is for the record.
That's my wife, Dawn.
Okay. So there isn't a structure on Lot 1, right?
Yeah.
There is, there's another whole, our house actually, that's the original plot plan from probably 1920.
There you go.
Yeah, see, the house goes over into Lot 1.
See where the truck and the shed is? That's what you're looking at?
Stand up there.
That's, that's all our lot.
Oh, my God.
Uh, I think I, we can't see there.
Oh, we'll back up, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
So that's.
So this, this would be the addition and the carport. This is bedrooms, this is our front door, arrangement of the kitchen, and that's the bedroom.
So that left side goes into Lot 1?
Yes, and those are bedrooms, so we didn't want to put a carport.
Gotcha, 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 very helpful.
And then also, Lot 1, it starts going down a hill, so if you would have put a carport there, it would start getting wonky.
Yeah. Yeah, wonky, it's helpful.
Well, the carport would start going down a hill.
I don't know why they still have that line, I don't know.
The addition is like higher in one section, and then it gets lower into the, the side.
So for, from my understanding, that, that plot plan doesn't accurately show the size of the house?
Oh, there you go, that's better.
Yeah, so that does.
Yep.
Well, there is space on the side.
So the grade of that side yard?
It goes down the hill, because we want to go to the road, so once you get, go into Lot 1, it's that sort of way.
All right, so it's the grade, and that creates, you're saying that creates a financial hardship. Detriment to the public good. Will this affect sightlines, people coming around that corner?
I didn't.
No, that's why we thought a carport would be just enough for snow coverage, so you can see right through it.
Would it affect people coming around the, driving around the corner sightlines? No, okay. Are there other structures in the area that are close to the road like that, or would this be unique?
Right across the street.
It's got a carport two feet from the road.
Neighbor's home, Jason.
Maybe you can bring up Google, Matt, Ann?
Yeah.
It's actually, for sale right now, going up to Bath House, it's Bath House Colonial, two feet from the road.
Yeah, it's like a deck carport. It goes pretty much, almost the street.
And that measures? Ten feet.
Ten feet, okay.
How far is their neighbor to the, to the right from the street, the one right next door?
I'm sorry.
The house right next door to them? From the street side to the right, how close is he?
Okay, I think the photos show it best.
Yeah, yeah, he's close.
And here's the property line, so they're, they're parking.
Yeah, the trucks.
It's 10 feet, maybe.
Yeah, they're parking off of the, their lot. Yeah, I can't measure that from here, because since, this, this has happened, 27 Colonials happened since the last aerial photo was taken.
On that mailing that you guys sent to us, it said he was like 14 feet.
Any other questions from the board?
Did you see that other house that's closer?
No, no, we'd have to enter that into the record.
Yeah, we have to take.
Your phone on you.
It's 12 years old, we can keep it.
Yeah, take it.
It took me that long to get it to come up.
Is the other departments in town, the other department signed off on it?
Yep, I asked for department comments. We did receive comments from Water and Sewer, Highway and Building, there were no objections. You did get comments from somebody who chose to stay anonymous, which you'll want to review in advance of making a decision. They submitted drawings, which are kind of hard to see on here.
Talking about waterside.
So, you do have, you do have some comments.
Any member of the public care to comment on the variance application before we move to the special permit? Does any member of the public care to comment on the variance application before we move to the special permit application? Uh, the other, come up, state your name.
Michael Caplow, and my address here is 17 Colonial Road, and I have no objection to the variance.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stacy Maycomber, 35 Colonial Road, and I have no problem with the variance whatsoever, my neighbor.
Okay. That's all you want to say, that's, that's all you can, perfect. All right. Special, so the special permit, Ms. Morgan, that deals with the addition.
Yes.
Any, does any, any comments received with, from that, from town departments that were negative?
Same ones, they, both, both applications went out on the same request for department comments.
Would this affect the light or passage of air to be impacted from one property, from one, from one of the others' property in a negative way?
The light?
Light, yeah, that's one of the criteria. And there's going to be nobody, this is going to, this is all going to be one continuous structure, this isn't going to be a, oh, create like a multifamily house, right? Okay.
No.
Okay. So you want to be opposed to a, a, a condition that would prohibit that? A condition that would prohibit, in, in, in our decision, we were able to put conditions in, and one of the conditions may be that you can't use this for a, for multifamily housing. We have issues with Airbnbs on the lake or rentals.
Absolutely.
So, okay. Any other questions from the board?
The, the comments section, the anonymous, the anonymous person, can we bring that up? There's two notes in there, I don't, I don't believe they pertain to this application. They may be complaints, but I don't believe they pertain to this application.
Yeah, it deals with an easement, the case they cited, so easements aren't something that.
Not relevant.
Yeah, we, we don't decide easements, that's for land court. All right. Would you like, for the members of the public, would you like your comments to be also added to the special permit, that you don't have any issues with it? Okay. Okay. That way you don't have to come up here and speak, and speak again. Just did a little, okay. Any other questions from the board?
No.
Any final comments before we close the hearing?
Do you have any questions about those comments?
I don't have any.
No, okay. Because one of them's wrong.
Yeah. Interesting case, though, I will say that, 17-page case that I had to pull up today at 4:00 too.
What's that?
I said it was an interesting case to read. Yeah. All right, is there a motion to close the variance and special permit applications for 25 Colonial?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Motion, second, any discussion, hearing none. Ms. Morgan, could you please pull the board?
Mr. Chikowski?
Yes.
Mr. Conoyar?
Yes.
Mr. Daggett?
Yes.
Mr. Faels?
Yes.
Mr. Pieter?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, is there a, any other business before the board, Ms. Morgan?
No, uh, since the time I posted the agenda, you've all given us, given dates, and your next meeting is July 18th. You do have two new applications that came forward that you'll hear on the 18th as well. So what has been a quiet season is turning into a busy season.
All right. All right, is there a motion to adjourn to July 18th?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Could you please turn off your microphone?
Thank you. I offered junior members a, an orientation, most of it, which you probably already know about their kinds of advances and the, the, which you probably know about. I'll send you the outline and let you figure out the time and schedule.
Did I make a move wrong, is that?
What?
Did you say meeting?
No.
You don't want to meet more?
No, no.